So, let's call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of March 31st, 2020 to order. I want to welcome everyone. It is our first virtual meeting under the Governor's Executive Order. And Fatima Clark, please call a roll.
Chairman Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheres?
Here.
Mrs. Johannes?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
She's here, she's muted.
Yep. And Mrs. Vada? She's here as well, okay. And Mr. Conell is not here.
He's here now.
He's here, he's muted.
All right.
I think I unmuted myself, is that correct?
We're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Excellent, thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of America and to the republic which stands one.
Under God, in the bold vote with liberty and justice for all. So, there's a public comment and a community comment, does anyone want to make a comment? Kyle, did you want to make a comment?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the line that would like to make a comment? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? I have a question on number eight. Just, I guess, can any of these middle school mathematic material be used for online learning? I mean, can it all be used for online learning? Claire, I think this goes to you.
Claire is not on at the moment, however, what I can say is that all of the materials that we purchased now have an online component.
Okay. And just on auto renewal contracts, I'd just like to pull that off, number nine. Anybody want anything else off?
Chair, can we take the resolutions off? I'm not going to vote on the resolutions because they go into the General Assembly.
Okay, so that's 10 and 11?
10, 11, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to pass 1 through 14, except for 9, 10, and 11.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Fatima, do you have who made those motions and seconded it?
That was me, Fatima. Fran.
And Jean seconded it.
Thank you.
I think we just lost Fatima.
I'm here, I just took my video off so I could hear because I lost a little bit of the audio.
Okay.
Fatima, do you have any questions?
Yeah, after you said 1-14, except 9, 10, and 11, I lost the rest of it.
Okay. Fran made the motion.
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes. And Mrs. Mayo seconded it. And I'll roll call that, Fatima.
Okay. Chairman Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheres?
Yes.
Mr. Conell?
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
The consent agenda passes. Let's move to item 10 and 11. I'll entertain a motion to pass 10 and 11 on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I'm going to recuse him because I work at the General Assembly, I need to go in there, so.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Just on item number nine, which is the auto renewal contract, I did put on the new business, item number four.
Yeah.
Which asked the solicitor to review all contracts and advise us in regards to this matter. So, I would just make it, I have no problem with any of the auto renewal contracts subject to the solicitor reviewing them. Does anybody have any objection to that?
I don't.
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to pass the auto renewal contracts subject to review by the I'll just say, subject to review by the solicitor.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Second. Second.
I have one question on that.
Yes, of course.
Do you contemplate then, like, say, the solicitor would be sending us a report on them, or they would just be renewing and they would only alert us when there's some kind of an issue?
So, moving to new business number four, I've asked the solicitor to review all contracts and advise on, like, non-binding contracts. For example, right now, we're not using bus services, or at least, I don't believe we are. So therefore, what are our legal obligations to that? And, you know, obviously, we don't want to be paying for things we're not using right now, and I just would like the solicitor to review these type of contracts to see what we're obligated to and what we're not, subject to us not using it. So, if all these renewal contracts are needed, and we're going to use them next year, then there's no question.
Yeah, I'm just saying, is he going to report back to us on, like, yeah, this one is no problem, this one's a problem, or are we just going to, you know, wait for them to get back to us?
Yeah, so I don't think, I don't think it's necessarily a problem or no problem, it's what are our, and again, we're going to ask the superintendent to also weigh in on all this stuff, to see, you know, I don't want to have a contract that we're not using, and then, three months down the road, either it's automatically renewed, or we get criticized for not canceling the contract, and we have a right to cancel it. That's my concern.
No, I agree with you, but I'm saying, how are we going to know when that's coming up and that we have that situation? That's what I'm saying.
All the contracts will go to the solicitor. Any of them that we are not using will come back to us with a report, or at least, that's my recommendation when we get to new business number four.
I know, I believe the point. Great, sounds good.
All right, so.
Could I ask who seconded that motion?
I think it was Bill, but.
Bill, okay.
Thought I seconded it.
Sorry about that, okay.
All right.
Can I just ask a question? I just, I want to ask Lisa if she's comfortable with all this.
So, I am. Most of these contracts on this list are operational contracts, or required, like elevator inspections and things of that nature. So, all of these, I would say, yes. The PPS contracts are based on our usage, so if we're not using them, we wouldn't pay. But, no, I don't have an issue with Ben reviewing them, I think that's what he'll find on this particular list.
Okay.
You can put it in with the other ones and have him review them.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll explain that, I only want the contracts renewed, reviewed, that we are not using. So, we're using all these contracts, and, like, Rhode Island School for the Deaf is a per-person, per-day type situation, and we're not using it, then of course, we would probably keep the contract. Does anybody have any other questions? If I may, Fatima, can you roll call that?
Sure. Chairman Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheres?
Yes.
Mr. Conell?
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mrs. Vada.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. Superintendent, it goes to you, your report.
So, I'm not really going to add much more than what I've been sending out in my regular updates to the community. All I just want to say is that I could not be more proud of North Smithfield, our teachers, our students, our family, our principals, our custodial maintenance, our teacher assistants, our instructional assistants, I mean, and really, to the entire community, and the parents and students, I mean, it's just been a very difficult situation, and I really think, given the circumstances, North Smithfield came out of this, or is in the middle of this, as best as we can be. I've had a lot of great feedback that I've seen, whether it's posts on social media or direct emails. In fact, I had a parent the other day ask, how can we get our children to go to North Smithfield schools? We don't live in North Smithfield, but everything we've been seeing has just been so great, we want to go there. So, I was able to talk about the CPE programs, but they wanted elementary and middle. So, it's, it's been a very difficult time, yet also a very shining time for us. Well, I've asked the principals to be here as well, I don't know if they would like to say anything about their buildings, or if you have questions for them.
Could I just say something? I want to thank you for everything that you are doing to keep us, and the staff, and the families, and the community informed. You said in an email to us that this crisis has reinforced with many families how happy they are to live in North Smithfield and have children in our schools, and you just referenced that. But, I think we, as a school committee, have been cheerleaders for how great this school system is, and this situation has proved it. We were prepared, we were ready on day one to move forward, so kudos to everyone involved for making it happen. It truly has been a team effort to travel an unknown pathway so successfully. So, thank you, everybody.
Very good, thank you.
And really, as what Jean had said, the day the superintendent, the commissioner asks for the plans, the school districts, and our plan was in, well, within 24 hours or so, and our plan was good, and we had a good, full plan in within 24 hours of the commissioner asking. But, it says a lot about, you know, it doesn't come together in 24 hours, it's the result.
Exactly, yeah.
I give the credit to Claire and the principals, and really pulling it all together. Tracy Nangle has been fantastic, the supporting of the teachers, as they, well, you know, many of them are already familiar with distance learning and online instruction, but she was instrumental in helping everybody else through to get there. So, for us, North Smithfield, we were running the first day of distance learning, whereas there were other districts that after the fake COVID vacation, they didn't really start distance learning until midweek last week, and even some now are still struggling, which is unfortunate. But, from our district and pretty much the whole state, we're pulling off something that no other state has attempted at this fail. So, it's, we're everybody. And, as you know, we've been ready for this for a while, going back two years to the virtual snow days. So, I mean, this is just also proving the concept that we know it can work. Ideally, we want everybody back there, at each ID, but under the circumstances, I think North Smithfield is pulling a fantastic job.
Superintendent, thank you, and thank the principals, teachers, support staff. I did put that on my Facebook page, and I received very positive responses on the Facebook page. So, thank you very much. Not only are you saying that, we are hearing it as well. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Superintendent, I just want to agree with everybody else, and I've heard great things too, and I'm so impressed with what you've all been able to do. I have a question that you might not be able to answer, but it has been something that's been on my mind the past couple of days, you know, if schools do reopen before the end of the school year, will students have the option to continue distance learning if they prefer, or do they have to return physically to school this year if schools do reopen?
I really can't comment on that. I can't see doing a hybrid approach, because if the school was in session, we'd still need teachers to do the distance learning, even if they can't really do both at the same time. So, we'll know at the end of April whether this will continue, or, you know, what the circumstances are, how we will be proceeding.
Great. And just one more thing, Superintendent, the meals program, how is that going?
I think, last I checked, Adam, maybe about 70 students signed up for it, you know, families representing about 70 students.
Yeah, that's right.
That's excellent.
Yeah, it's great.
And, and it's going well. I'll be up tomorrow. We actually arrange Wednesdays, we go in, because there's a number of things that we need to do with office and payroll and things like that, and I'm checking in with the lunch program, I want to be there during the collection to see how that's going. I am, we do have four days that the state is having no, quote unquote. I am trying to get confirmation from Chartwells that even on those full days, we will still be able to distribute meals, and especially over the long weekend, the Holy Thursday, Good Friday, and that weekend, you know, that we'll be able to do a food distribution at that time. Now, I should say that if for some reason we can't, because we're looking at a statewide approval for reimbursement for lunches, beyond just the free and reduced student, that there are pickup places across the state that don't have, that have a special set of regulations as far as who can, so, for example, the Windsocket locations, they have less restrictions because of the economics of the community. But, we're doing our best to help our families directly just up the road at the high school. Plus, we also use the food pickup as a good place to distribute Chromebooks. If we have students who have a Chromebook that for some reason can't, won't run, Adam has been there, he has a stash of them in his house, that he's ready to reformat and be over at the high school to distribute the Chromebooks for families. So, you know, we're using it as sort of a multipurpose collection point. Like, and I have to, and I have to give Chairman Lombardi kudos on this one, because he was the one who asked me about the Friday pickup for weekend distribution, which I hate to say, it didn't occur to me to do that, but, you know, thank you for mentioning that, we got immediately on the phone with Chartwells, they made the arrangements, and, you know, so Friday pickup is covered, lunches and breakfast for the weekend as well.
That's great.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Superintendent, did you want to discuss anything in regards to the coronavirus?
Not necessarily. Again, I've been sending out the updates, and we're just, we're just taking all of our cues from the CDC, the Department of Health, the governor, and the commission. And again, I mean, the rate of infection in North Smithfield is extremely low, and I think the community has just been doing a remarkable job, abiding by the guidelines and the regulations.
Great. Anybody have any comments? The next section is informational only, it's personnel appointments, resignation, leave of absences. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent in regards to this?
I don't, I looked them over, the paperwork.
Moving on to old business, the fiscal year 20 budget. Lisa?
Right now, there's a lot of moving pieces, where, as we go along, we're reviewing all of our obligations. I mean, I think because of the COVID-19, we'll definitely see some savings, but we won't know the full impact for a little while yet.
Fiscal year 21, obviously, I don't even know how to address that right now, but we have it in place, right? Right now, we've sent it up to the, is it the Budget Committee who has it right now?
We have a meeting scheduled with the Budget Committee next Tuesday, I believe, and as far as I know, that's still on.
All right.
It'll be virtual.
Oh, wow. Can someone make sure that we have the call-in information and everything else for that meeting?
Oh, absolutely. We'll be the ones hosting it, so I'll set it up and distribute everything.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions in regards to the operating or capital budgets?
No.
Let's move on to new business. Mr. Conell?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the committee. I just asked this to be put on. Obviously, I think that it's tough on a lot of the seniors, though I have to say, I run into a lot of our seniors, senior kids, and they're doing very well. But again, some of the things that they lost already this year, some of the kids were in the choir, they were going to go to a big band choir trip to Virginia, that's down, and that's something they look forward to, you know, every four years, it's down there. They had their trip, the senior trip to Ohio, that's, looks like that's at least canceled for the moment. Allstate Music Festival was a couple of weeks ago, and I could go down a list of a bunch of things that, and obviously, a lot of these things are out of our control. Spring sports are on hold at best, you know, I'm hoping, you know, something happens, but I don't want to get everybody optimistic, we'll just see what happens. So, I just put this on there was to say, I just wanted us, as a committee, to take as much leadership as we could, working with our staff and the schools, to say, you know, we support, maybe, depending on where they're at, and again, this is, I don't want to say it's fluid, but yeah, it's fluid, maybe we do something like, get an activities for the kids, something special in July, in July, something where, if they have a trip in July, if we can't do something before then, maybe we look at doing stuff, really have to think outside the box. And I'm just really putting this out there to, I don't expect any action tonight, because I don't think there's any action we can do, except to say, let's convey to the senior advisors, who I know, but just as a committee, that we want to support them, and think of outside of the box activities. Rob Skinner, who's one of the senior activity, lives here, is here in town, so, you know, the kids will be around, and again, when we get into July, kids will be going, getting ready for college, going away, but I just want us to try to, try to do what we can to try and help this. And I, let me, full disclosure, I have a senior, in the senior class, I'm not looking for expenditure money, but just that we can help coordinate and be there to support if they want to try and make up some of these lost experiences. And, open to ideas, I just wanted to put that out there, just point that out, and I think we can recreate a lot of the things that some of the other classes are losing. What I mean, losing experiences, it's not the same, but we can, we have another year of some of those kids to, you know, to recapture some of it, but the seniors are gone after
And, just, I agree with you, you know, 100% in regards to this matter, and, you know, we're going to move on to graduation in a minute. Does anybody else want to discuss anything having to do with missing your trips and other senior activities?
Is there any group together, or perhaps staff from the high school, talking to the kids for maybe their input or their ideas as to what might work for them?
Yeah, actually, I have a meeting tomorrow with student council, so I'm having chat, just like we're having here right now with student council.
Perfect.
Just to get an idea of what they need from me, and we'll, you know, we're going to go 150%, whatever we need to do, we're going to do.
Excellent, thank you.
Well.
Chair, I'd like to ask, the kind of thing I always hope, if it's okay with the committee, if you can just convey, or just in the, in the, just discussing with those kids, let them know that, just, I'd like to let them know, this was discussed with the committee, and that we want to, we want to support them and be there for them, if there's anything, if there's anything within reason we can do for them, we want to try to help. If that means doing something outside the box, and what I mean, outside the box, I mean, outside the usual mindframes, I'd like them to know that, you know, I'd like to know we have our support, that we're willing to do something different if we need to.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all on the same page. The senior prom is actually supposed to be on a boat, leaving Boston, so I don't, I don't know what's going to happen with that. But, we'll, everybody here wants to see them get some recognition, like, that's a no-brainer, it's just waiting this, waiting this thing out to know exactly the timing, and whether that happens, July, August, whatever it happens, it'll happen, this is going to tell us when we can do it, though.
Oh, no, I absolutely understand that, and, you know, we may not be able to do anything, my only point really, put this on there is to try and keep it alive so that, you know, because when we get, let's face it, by the time you get to mid-July, you're thinking about the next year, and the senior class is out, but this year, if we could just keep them, and if they're, just to keep in mind, if there is something we can do in July and August, kids will be getting ready, and kids will be going away to their next phase in life, assuming, at least that's what I hope we're going to be, and I'm, let me rephrase, that's where we will be, I predict, so.
Well, I can tell you that, I jumped on a meeting with all the superintendents around the state, and this was a topic of conversation, how to do right by the seniors, and how we're going to handle all these offenses that were coming up and may not happen, you know, from the awards nights, the junior prom, the senior prom, graduation, and I know that's next on the list. And what we've done is, there's a number of things that we're all trying to wrestle with, and we're calling subcommittees, and next week, we should have a sort of a compiling options and ideas and concepts that the different districts are thinking of, and sort of pool our resources and collective experiences to see if we can, as you said, you know, come up with something out of the box and do right by our students, or missing on these, missing out on these important items.
I'm so glad to hear that, I think that's the idea, try and pull together, that's one thing, try and pull, pull all our resources together, I think that's, yeah, that's, can't really, that's all we can ask for.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns about this matter?
Nope, just let us all know how we can help.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, I have been getting calls and texts, and being called on on Facebook about graduation, and I'm going to add the prom, senior prom, and things like that. One of the things that I would like to support, and I think the superintendent also, and I'm sure the principals, that we need to have a public graduation at some point, whether, whenever we have the ability to do it. Whenever it's safe to do it, I don't know if it's going to be over the summer, you know, later on in the year, but that's something that I would ask the superintendent to comment on, both graduation and the prom, when we could, if there's a possibility of doing it sometime in the future, and what his position is on it.
I think it's very safe to commit that, you know, these things will happen in one way, shape, or form, when we're allowed to.
I agree.
Great. So, I put it on for discussion vote and other actions, so I assume that you don't need any, any type of action from us to move forward on that?
I don't think so. I mean, we're going to move forward regardless of what you think.
Good.
Yeah, if we don't put something together, I will lose my job, so I will, I will find something and put something together, I just don't know what that will be and when. But, guaranteed, or I'm going to be on the outside looking in.
Well, this is unprecedented, so, really, in our, in our lifetime, it is, so, it does call for outside the box, yeah, I know, but it's going to be, look, really different, and that's, it's what it is, it is what it is. So, I guess we just want to reiterate our support for whatever, as a policymaking body, whatever we can do to help.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions? Let's move to emergency funding. I put this on to see if the superintendent needed anything from us, any type of vote, if there's not enough Chromebooks and he needs more Chromebooks, any type of funding that he would need for us to approve. I asked that this be put on, so Superintendent?
Nothing funding-wise, I think we're okay, we're okay with that. Because we're in this really strange situation in which we have things that have been budgeted that can't happen, but we have a couple of other things that have come up, so for example, like the meals program. However, and I know this gets difficult, difficult on the accounting end, but we do have money that was put aside for Decker and We the People, and we're not doing that. So that money can pay for the meals for the community. So at this stage, we're okay. What is a little difficult, and I'm glad we are now doing virtual meetings, in that there are a number of contracts and decisions, and it's a very fluid situation, and we need the school committee input. So we have met with our solicitor, and you know, he did recommend to superintendents and school committees kind of work on some emergency power type of things, so that decisions can be made on the fly without having to meet all the time. But I feel better in the sense that we're now meeting again. So I don't know if Lisa, if you have any input in this, because there are things that have come up that sort of your back has been to the wall with trying to get certain things in place.
So with me, it's mostly the timing of the disbursements, and we are moving some of the payments over to ACH. The trust is requiring that. Some of the deduction vendors are requiring that. What the solicitor had recommended was that the school committee adopt a resolution to allow the superintendent to extend his powers, so he could approve disbursements, authorize ACH payments, maybe approve emergency procurements up to a specified amount, authorize for employee layoffs and terminations as needed, and maybe approve vendor contracts. So I don't know if you'd want to do something like that, or pick and choose some of those, or I mean, as long as we're having the virtual meetings, we could be, should be okay. But right now, in the world that we're living in, there's no guarantees what's going to happen next.
All right, Lisa, are there things on that list that you would prefer over others? I mean, things that we should definitely be considering?
I don't know, what do you think, Mike?
Is there anything that needs to be decided upon immediately?
I mean, we actually did have to, we went through the chair, and we had Peg approve the last list of disbursements, because our meeting kept being postponed, postponed. So that would have been nice to be able to have him to approve, like, the disbursements and ACH payments.
I actually feel much better in the sense that, you know, we are meeting virtually and we can maintain regular meetings. It was actually quite difficult when we had our meeting set for the 17th, which was then moved and then moved again. So I think we're now getting back on track again, so I think, I think we're okay. And, you know, certainly, if something does come up, you know, I'll just reach out to the chair and, you know, make a determination or follow his lead on this.
Okay, I mean, it sounds like we have a plan, and we can, obviously now, it's March 31st, we're going to meet again in April. We're going to go on our regular, we're back to our regular schedule now, I assume?
Yes.
We'll be meeting just in a couple, we'll be meeting in two and a half weeks or so, so on my calendar.
I think it's the 21st.
Okay, so
Yes, the 21st.
A little, just slightly less than, oh, exactly three weeks, we'll be meeting in three weeks, exactly.
Does anybody else have any questions on this? And that was the emergency funding, right, you lost me for a few minutes.
Yes.
So in regards to the next item, I did talk to the superintendent about having the solicitor review all the contracts and to advise both him and us on any non-binding contracts that are non-essential based on, you know, the remainder of this year. It's just my belief that we're probably going to stay on remote learning for the rest of this year. And if we don't need contracts that we're paying for, we should probably just look into what our options are. And the superintendent agreed, and I think Lisa agrees with that as well. Does anybody have any questions on this? Superintendent, do you need any votes on this?
No, not necessarily, we've already started the process. Our solicitor had a virtual conference with all the superintendents that his firm is contracted with. And we went through, this was Monday at 2:00, Lisa and I were on the call, and we went through exactly this. And there are things that we're looking at from a state standpoint, for example, the contract with statewide busing. We were told that they will not be billing rides or bus runs that they're not performing. We did have a conversation about our local transportation providers and what this looks like, with a conversation about layoffs. So there's a lot of moving parts, there are a lot of changes based on the stimulus package. And so right now, everyone is sort of trying to weave in and out of what the finances look like, what the stimulus package will bring, how much of that filters down to K-12. We are, we are obligated, the whole package, everything is involved with keeping our staff employed, so we're not looking at layoffs. Everybody has to keep them employed now. When you go into the, like, the bus contracts and some of the other things, that's when it gets a little bit more questionable, although I understand that the bus companies are also going to be eligible for some of the stimulus money as a industry that has been impacted by the virus and the school closure.
Correct.
Right now, there's, like I said, there's just a lot of moving parts, there's changes in FMLA, sick leave, and reimbursements and contracts, and so our solicitor has been on top of it and working with the superintendents, and we're, you know, to be honest, the advice was to kick this can down the road as much as possible, because people are going to change. So it's a waiting game, and we just keep our eyes open and make the best of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions? Superintendent, is there anything else that you need to discuss with us?
I thank you all for coming online and doing this, this is, this has been quite the experience, so thank you all.
It was nice seeing everybody.
Yes. Yes, thank you, and Mike, once again, thank you for everything that you're doing, and keep up the good work, everybody, and be safe.
Thank you.
You as well, I want to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Okay. Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned, everyone be safe.
Thank you.
I've captured this on YouTube, and I will be sending it to Carl to upload to YouTube, so you can relive this moment over and over and over again.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Aye.